Good evening, this is the November 11th, 2014 regular meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education. It is Veterans Day, so we'd like to thank our veterans for their service. And may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the October 28th, 2014 regular meeting?
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa. All those are papers. That motion passes. We have an opportunity for public comment. Is there any public that wishes to make a comment at this time? Okay, thank you. And Larry Anthony is here to give us an update on our food service program.
Take one of each and pass it around. Since I started in Larry Anthony's Food Service Department, working with Red Hook and Rhinebeck School District, what I'm presenting for you here is what I see as our current standings and then what our objectives are going forward. I have it broken down into some categories based on infrastructure, and then there are three kitchens at the middle school and high school, and at Chancellor Livingston. The bid process, I mean, I've written a bid for dairy that coincided with both Red Hook and Rhinebeck. Because the bid that brought the dairy was from Bozies, and prices came in way too high, didn't meet our satisfaction, so our deliveries and things like that seemed as bermed dairy was wanting to get out of the milk business to school districts. So we bid it, and Mike signed one bid from Poughkeepsie. Brought in a good price for us, 25 cents a carton versus the 33, 34 cents that bermed dairy was quoting. So that's a little bit about the bid. The menu development, things that I put in, and I gave you guys a copy of two menus, just the current menu for November. Some of the things that I've been changing and working with is, number one, to recognize the local farms that was purchasing our food from, and that is, we're really coming through Red Hook's produce, who sources local stuff, and he's out of new balls. And then, just currently this morning, I went on a field trip up to Germantown to Hardy Roots Farm up there, and Lindsey and Ben shooting up there. I'd like to bring some of their stuff in as well, as things materialize. They have some fresh eggs, they have a lot of vegetables right now based on the time of season, but I'm looking to expand and then bring them in a little bit between Red Hook and Rhinebeck. So recognizing some of the local farms that I'm putting on the menu. The column on the left in the Sunday column, Sunday week, there's a selection of vegetables, not vegetables, but salads. So it's a reimbursable meal, so any of the kids who are encouraged to eat vegetarian, these are also, with the exclusion of the roll, because the grain is part of the reimbursable lunch, it's also a gluten-free meal as well, that can be incorporated. So those are the additions that I've done. Also noting the calories and the portion sizes of each meal component, because the lunch composes of five components that make up the reimbursable lunch. This also helps the staff as well, educate the people and folks on what the portion size, because they do vary from grade levels, so that's where that comes from.
Is that the size of the portion that makes them vary?
Correct. Correct. The other current things that are in the category is the food safety part, that I'm implementing a food safety program. The food safety program, this is the bible of food safety programs for school lunch. It's a HACCP-based procedure with standard operating procedures that include temperature taking, everything from receiving food, to the preparation of food, to the cooking of food, to the serving of food, and then going through all the other processes, whether you're preparing food ahead of time, and then cooling it down. And an example would be like Taco Me or Chili, where you're cooking it on Tuesday, because it's on the menu on Wednesday or Thursday, and then you go through the cooking process, cooling it down, then reheating it. So there's a program that needs to be put in place, which that has already started as well. And then also on the personnel side, as far as, I've been through all the kitchens, I've seen the breakfast service, I've seen the lunch service. I've assessed their skill set as well, so I'm getting a good feel on where the staff is as far as implementing the menus, because there's also another menu in the works that I passed around for you, and it's for faculty and staff, though we can adjust the recipes and the portion sizes for the students, should they want to partake in it. This is still under, this is a rough draft in a sense, but it just needs a little bit more tweaking, the product needs to be brought in, the staff needs to be trained on how to do the menu, and then we're gonna roll it out. So that's in the works in that regard. So as far as the current standings, there's some repairs going on at Chancellor Livingston, there's a steam table weld that is fitted from line scale, that's gonna need to be replaced in the not-too-distant future. There's a couple of spot welds, they're just to hold and maintain it. The pot and pan sanitizer system has been installed. We're moving from a bleach sanitizer to a quantenerammonium sanitizer. And it's a little bit cheaper in the long run, it's already metered, so it's all plumbed in, so staff turns the meter on, fills up the sink with, and it's already between the soap and the sanitizer, so that's going to be, there's no pre-measuring of anything, it doesn't stain your clothes like bleach does, and it's not as caustic as bleach, the quantenerammonium. So that's been installed in all three kitchens, so that's currently in the works. Refrigeration is in good shape, the only exception to that would be, there's a reach-in freezer that's a little erratic in its maintaining a consistent temperature, and that's at the high school. It doesn't seem to be anything outrageous, we don't have to run out and buy a new freezer by any means, but that's, of all refrigeration units, that's the one that gives us a little So as far as looking at the ovens and the steamers, there's Market Forge steamer, it's an old unit at Chancellor Livingston, it's checked out as the overall condition is in good shape and it's safe to use, because what's attached to it as well, so there's a 30-gallon steam jacked kettle, so it's one big unit. The long-term plan is to, I'd like to make Chancellor Livingston a central commissary type, because they have the ovens, the steamers, and that kettle to facilitate that. So generally speaking, the Market Forge steamer has got a pretty good clean bill of health, but there are some gaskets that need to be replaced in it, so that's in the process So those are some of the current standings that we have going for us right now. Looking forward, I'd like to replace some racks and some shelving that's in Chancellor Livingston. Right now, we have some cinder blocks and wooden planks that are being used as shelving, which it's not, as long as it's six inches off the floor and six inches away from the wall, the health department doesn't have any issues with the type of materials that we're using, but it's a little bit more neat and clean and orderly. If we could get the floor painted in the storm at Chancellor, that'd be great. There's an area as well where the dishwasher used to be, I'd like to try to offer that and make that as a healthy snack type center. We can open up the window, kids can come up, so we can sell smoothies and granola bars and other types of fresh fruits and vegetables as snacks and other alternatives. That would make a good opportunity for it. So as far as adding smallwares along the board too, as far as to each school, pots and pans as we can expand, with the additional menu items, and looking to, my objective and goal is to feed everybody. That's the mission. I want to feed staff, students, anybody who wants to walk in, visitors, I want to create that and type of environment to include everybody. And part of that is, I'd like to include and move forward with some kind of electronically communicated device, whether it be iPad or some kind of computer for the kitchen, so I can create recipes and menus and deliver them electronically. Part of the food safety process and the process of working with understated guidelines, having nutritional information available for all the menus and menu items, and being able to communicate that out to all the buildings and all the kitchens at one time, you know, makes things a lot easier. Part of the process with the recipes is they have to be in three categories, cook, no-cook, and complex. So right now, I have a process where they're in binders, because in one way, shape, form, or another, they have to be in three categories based on the food safety bible that we're working out of. Right now, I have them in binders, but ultimately, if we can just put them in some kind of electronic form, they can be accessed easy, and with the nutritional information, which could be sent out to parents for kids with diabetes, things with celiac, and other food allergens and things like that. So across the board, I like to include that down the road, that's a long-term vision. Part of the bid process, I'm gonna create a bid that will include both of our school districts, Red Hook and Rhinebeck, and perhaps even offer, we can maybe include Germantown, maybe Pine Plains. It increases our buying power. And we'll also, I'd like to also create an aggregate bid for things like dairy, bread, smaller items like snacks, because when you go through the list of splitting bread bids, as it is trying to meet minimum orders with a district this small, and even the trouble I'm having with Red Hook as well, meeting minimum orders, and then taking a bread order and then splitting that down even further, saying, you know, this bakery gets the English muffins, this one gets a sliced bread, this one gets a hot dog rolls, we'll get away from that, because then this way, better price, don't have to worry about the minimum order, and then also it will eliminate having to add things to the order just to meet the minimum, so then that blows our inventory and that's more menu item inventory needless. So the menu development part of it is, again, to electronically speaking as well, that's an ongoing process as far as adding menu items, having the food safety behind it, having the three-step process for it. And also, under the menu process, I'm gonna encourage skill sampling with the kids, so they can try new items, see new items. Just currently now, working with Ginsburg, I'm bringing in pomegranates, star fruits, there's clementines coming in. So, and it's not to, you know, it's to show the kids, I mean, to put a half a cup serving of pomegranates is maybe a bit much times 1,000 kids, but they're gonna see it, and that's gonna garnish our fruit salads and things like that, so they're gonna be seeing that stuff coming down the line as well. Part of the food safety portion of this, this is an ongoing dynamic that doesn't change, it spreads the responsibility of the food safety and HACCP to all the food service people, because it's a complex system that can't rely on one particular person. It includes temperature taking, thermometer calibration, monitoring hot foods and cold foods, so, so this is a shared responsibility, that's gonna be the crux of the program. It is, there's a lot of standard operating procedures based on receiving, all the way to serving and storing food. And then the other thing I'd like to address down the line for the future is establishing some kind of chain of command as well within our kitchen staff. Duchess County has a list of job descriptions, everything from a senior cook manager to a cook manager, and this is the hierarchy of the typical kitchens in school food service. Then we have a chain of command, then also to include a uniform of some sort for the staff, so that recognizes them as someone who's on the team, working within the district, and then even given a little bit different uniform for the kitchen manager, so that would be the person of responsibility, the point person. So those are some of the things that I've outlined, you know, for where we're at and then where I'd like to go. Okay, so I kinda showed you a quick snapshot of where we're at, and then a picture of the mountain that we want to climb, but of course, it's one step at a time, so it's just something I wanna, you know, share with you folks. If you have any questions, emails, you know, it's by all means, I'm open to all this stuff, so I wanted to make everybody aware of this.
What kind of gear can we buy you to help you up this mountain in a serious way? What do you need besides what you have here on the list?
Yeah, particularly with pots and pans, some kinda, you know, heavy duty stuff in a sense, because there are a few things in the, that are in inventory now, but there doesn't seem to be a lot of it on hand right now. There's a couple of big pots in the middle school kitchen, there's not, there's a couple, two or three smaller ones, because one of the beauties about working in this district is, it's small enough to where the head count of the meals that we're serving can more than, more often than not, easily be done on the stove top, because we aren't utilizing the ovens and the stove tops as much as I would like. I mean, as the menu evolves, and that's one of the things that, you know, I can, being that we are small enough, I can really evolve these menus into things different, almost on a weekly basis in a sense. But things like pots and pans, and there's a spattering of like different types of spatulas and scoops and things like that, which are important to making sure that the portion sizes are appropriate for the particular grade levels. So those smallware type of things, and the pots and pans would be the quickest, and thermometers as well, is what I have to go with the search for, because as I started with this food safety program, thermometers are key in maintaining and knowing where the temperatures are of everything.
Are there enough of these, so that the combination with Red Hook makes it more economical to get for both of us, or both districts at the same time?
Yeah, that's, ultimately, yes. That's the short answer, and that's, right now, it's been a couple of months now, and now I'm really seeing more of the dynamic of how things are operating, and I've already started, you know, sharing some stuff back and forth, but as we're, because right now, I'm still working with two independent school districts that have two totally different plans, not really plans long-term by any means, but just two ways of doing things, and I'm just trying to meld them all together. And I've been able to get the deliveries, the vendors on board, because in the beginning it was Red Hook on Wednesday, Rhinebeck on Thursday, and with half a dozen vendors. Well, now, they've all, I've been able to get them all together, so we can make one delivery, you know, make the round, so I don't have to worry about multiple days that way. So that's a step in the right direction as well. So it's just a matter of purchasing things like that and getting things together, it does make, you know, a lot more sense to purchase things in bulk that way, and it does help, and does save.
Are you thinking that at some point, you mentioned the commissary idea-
Yeah, that Chancellor-
-and using that as a commissary, but are you, have you been thinking at all about combining the two districts for food preparation purposes? You know, using a central commissary for both districts?
There is the capability of doing that as well, because we're doing that in Mill Road now, and they have pretty much a similar setup as you have at Chancellor, and it's funny, it's an elementary school, and it's an elementary school in Red Hook. They have a big 30-gallon kettle as well, and they have a person who works there, her name is Susan Palmer, she's been, she works there a full day from 6:30 until 2:30, and she prepares the foods ahead of time, some of the bulk stuff, and then the courier brings it on over. So as far as working logistics out to do the whole district, there is the capability of doing that, long-term, but I think if we, as far as getting their courier to come over on the other end of town, which would be O'Hare, which isn't a huge distance, but it could work, because both kitchens are big enough to adequately supply probably both districts as well, so, but that would be a good, you know, a good start, we'd be starting at Chancellor and then taking that step to start here, and then ultimately, because then comparing the two kitchens, there's more oven capability at Chancellor than there is at Mill Road element or at Red Hook. So it could, I could see it all coming out of here as well. So, but then, you know, we have to get a courier on the road, and then the materials to make sure that the food safety, keeping the hot food hot and cold food cold as it goes out, so. But yeah, it's definitely doable, by all means.
First, I want to thank you for your vision on this, it's really, it's great, and I would, this menu, it looks really great. So based on current standings and where you want to go, what kind of timeframe are you looking at in terms of being able to get the funding and the process organized in such a way that you can have it all?
Sure. The equipment repairs are gonna happen, because they have to happen within, you know, within the next couple, three weeks, within a month's time, and it's nothing's really, the only critical thing is with that steam table. As far as getting another person, you know, if we wanted to create this commissary, I would say that could be done within the year. We have, some of the problem is that we're gonna have is with staffing. That's, I've got some substitutes since, a couple of people who are wanting to work, and as I'm hiring, I'm offering, here's the opportunity to work in Rhinebeck and Red Hook as well, so that's a little bit more attractive to folks to work, because there's more opportunity. So commissary, I don't see why we couldn't get that going within another year timeframe. The biggest chunk and the biggest nut to crack, I think, is gonna be the electronic part of it, as far as if we can get a computer in the kitchen, or use the existing cash registers out of there, I don't know if they're, I know the program is web-based, but I don't know if those computers have access to the web as well. If we can use that as maybe like, as they can get emails on there, and get my recipe, so that would save a lot as well, if they can work a dual purpose out of that, and that would save a huge lot of time and a lot of, you know, computer purchasing as well. So I could see this all happening within the next couple of years, you know, that's what I'd be shooting for at the latest, but again, a lot of this is gonna turn into the staffing that we have involved, because as these menus are evolving, even some of the stuff that's, that I'm already, you know, instituting, I could see some of the people aren't taking it as jovial as I'm presenting it. So, but you know, there's a lot of heart and soul here as well, so I think, you know, just a little bit more persuasion and knowing where it's coming from, they'll, you know, there's a lot of potential there, there really is, and I can see that, so, I don't want to let a good opportunity pass us by, so. But yeah, within a couple of years, I'd like to see all this materialize, but if not, we always have tomorrow, you know, it's, you know, it's just gonna be one step at a time and get everybody on board with, especially with the menu changes, that's the biggest, because they're not used to what, you know, well, change is hard for a lot of people, but man, I like change, because it keeps things interesting, keeps things exciting, and it keeps everybody on, moving forward with some other mindset, so.
Thank you.
Diane. You've definitely been busy, in the short time you've been here.
Sure, absolutely.
Can you just talk a little bit more about this menu? Had said, this could be available for the kids as well?
Yes, because we're gonna offer this stuff every day, so, and if we're gonna offer it to the, I mean, the target audience is the staff and faculty and the adults, but if, because again, my philosophy is to feed everybody, so if a student sees, I want the potato cheese soup, we can portion size it to the point where they can purchase it, and as long as it fits into the competitive food parameters, we can sell all this stuff independently as well as in our car. Yeah, so that would be able to, you know, create some more diversity for the kids who may want to partake in this as well.
Right. The other thing, which really isn't a question for you, but that mission to feed everyone, it has been brought to our attention in the past about switching recess and lunch, particularly at Chancellor, Brett, I don't know if you wanna, kids tend to throw out their food because they're not ready to get to recess, or thought to switch that around, but it occurs to me, it may also increase participation with our food program if it's switched around. I don't know, I know we've talked about this in the past, and not to put you on the spot, Brett, but I don't know if that is, if there's a barrier to that, to switching it around, or if that's something that's even a possibility?
Yes, it's always a possibility. When I first gave it to Chancellor, it was a conversation in the back, we had like a good nutrition bid, so then we did talk about it, you know, kinda looking at some of the education in the schools. But it was, I had, it was only on three hours, and it was hot, and they were coming back in, they weren't eating, and it was during the fourth of July. And one of the reasons they so late we flip-flopped, and it actually worked well there, but it was one of the reasons we were doing it. Here, that was, that's really the only kind of, that's been the notion that's been brought up, is why would we do it exactly for that, this notion, in terms of rushing to get out. You know, when you kinda look at it, there's arguments for both sides, just because of the way that nutrition committee worked out, we went to our district level, I had a conversation, never, you know, there was never really any argument for or against, leaning either way, it was more on the line of, you know, what would be the benefit? And that was one, you know, one of the things that, which isn't a big deal, one of the tougher things is master schedule, flip-flopping those timeframes, you know, like kindergarten is being a little bit later right now, they're 11:00, 11:30, which is a good time, but regardless, it's, I actually still have all of that, all the information from Rhinebeck, so it's something we want to discuss, especially if we, you know, I'm helping all this committee, if I can be the person that they're mad of, I do a lot of info, I heard that they will vote for and against. I don't think there's anything major keeping us in there, we're just gonna move forward with these.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so thanks really for being here, this is great, and as Diane said, you've been working hard, and like such great stuff going on, it's all really exciting, so thank you. It's really been great.
Appreciate the opportunity as well, and your guys' support as well as meeting everybody, and it's, it's working out really well, I'm happy with everything so far. You know, there's some day-to-day things that rub you the wrong way as things work, you know, as the day unfolds, but by and large, everything's been working really well. Like I said, meeting the garden committee at the Red Hook, and going to the farm this morning, and there was a farm to institute some that went on at Duport's that I attended, to help, you know, bring, you know, some information back and forth to, and one of the things is to create a hub locally, for the local farmers to bring their produce, and then we can pick it from there to kinda eliminate the trouble of trying to get things, you know, the transportation, the delivery of it, so.
Right.
And that's one of the things that, you know, hopefully with Ben and Lindsey, exchanging phone calls and emails with Kevin from Red Barn, because he could be a good source for them as well if it all works out.
Well, it's an exciting time in a lot of ways, I know that the USDA rules are challenging, but, and I really want to thank you for dealing, you know, with two separate school systems, as you said, that do things differently, there are challenges, so I also wanted to just ask you about, I think, the software program that we use for payment and potentially for inventory control, it's different software than Red Hook uses, so is that creating like a lot of trouble for you? Is that something that you would see in a couple of years if we maintain this relationship that should be worked out, or is, I mean, maybe you haven't been at it long enough to know, but is that an obstacle? Does that create more work for you, or?
To a certain degree, it does, I mean, because I'm learning two separate systems, because I've worked for over 10 years with a system called NutraKids at Arlington, and I started from the ground floor with that, and did menu planning, nutritional analysis, all the allergies and things like that, parents could go online and see what the kids are eating exactly, what, if they wanted, nurses for diabetes, so all that stuff was already in the program. So, working with that for so many years, and going to Red Hook and here, Rhinebeck, Red Hook uses a program called Lunchbox, and then, of course, we have one here, it's called Etrition, so, so there's not too many similarities between Lunchbox and Etrition, so it's, so learning both systems just makes that much a little bit more troublesome, but ultimately down the road, and I've already been asking questions of NutraKids and Lunchbox about, you know, because they're under, they have about another year and a half in Red Hook to use Lunchbox before there's some kind of timeframe that's up, their agreement. And, but ultimately, yeah, we could put everybody underneath one umbrella with the same program, the software, so it is doable, and that wouldn't make the most sense if, provided we still want to move forward with utilizing both school districts as one, and that would make the most sense, and this way we can centralize phone calls and things like that, which I'm starting to do as well, because we send out the letters out for negative balances, and instead of having to call the office here in Chancellor that I have, and just call me at Red Hook, because I'm spending a lot of my time there anyway, and being that Etrition is web-based, I can pull up the kids' accounts there in Red Hook as well, so instead of having to come here, back and forth, so it makes it a little bit easier, you know, to be up there, and plus now, I've got, we just hired a clerical staff to work for food service for three, three-quarter hours in Red Hook, so they'll be, so I can get out in the field a little bit more, so, and then there's someone there to answer the phone when parents call about the negative balances and things like that, so, so that's working out as well.
Great.
Put me more, more in kitchens, where I like to do this, make sure everything's going the way that I planned it. the way that I planned it.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you so much. Thanks so much.
Move on to the discussion on school start time.
Okay, well, hopefully you've had a chance to read some, if not all, of the information that I've provided to you at the end of last, our last board meeting. There's certain, no pun intended, since I'm still here, but there's certainly a lot of food for thought in that, in that information. And one, one thing that, that's become apparent to me is, if it wasn't already, and if it wasn't to you after doing some reading, is that this is, this is a complex topic. It's, to quote my colleague, it's got, it's got a lot of tentacles, and I don't mean that in a bad way necessarily, but there are a lot of things that we need to consider in even having the conversation about, about changing our, our school start time. Multiple ways to do it, and it has impacts on, on things like transportation, on budget, on after-school activities, athletics, and there's a lot there. You start to peel that onion back, and there, there are a lot of layers there. And I think that if this is, if this is a, a road that the board wants to go down, and by this I mean studying this topic, I'm not saying making a decision one way or the other. One thing that I took away from, from the second reading that I gave you last time around is that the process is, is critically important regardless of what kind of decision we, we may make or decide not to make. And engaging our stakeholders is important, and taking, taking the time to do it deliberately and carefully and correctly to, to lay out the pros and cons, you know? In my mind, I see the, I see the end game being, you know, being the proverbial two list, you know, reasons why, reasons why not, and coming up with some, okay, which, does one list outweigh the other list? Are there more pros than cons or vice versa? Because I don't think it's going to, my gut feeling is, it's not going to be 30 things on the pros list and two things on the cons list. I mean, I think it's going to be a difficult decision, and I don't think this is necessarily going to be a topic that's going to be particularly easy to build consensus over. And I'm basing that on the readings that I've done just recently, as well as our own experience a number of years back. If it's, if it's something that the board wants us to pursue, then we'll, we'll roll up our sleeves and, and put a process into place and start, start moving down that road of researching that, that topic. If it's something that the board is inclined to say, you know what, Joe, don't waste all those hours that you're going to have to put into this because we're not interested. I mean, tell me, because we don't, we don't need another, you know, two due. We, we got a ton of two dues already, but this is important enough that if the board says, yeah, we really want to dig into this issue, so we can consider making a, you know, informed choice, then we'll put that on our plate, and we'll start to put a process into play. And that's, that's the one thing I want to walk away from this meeting is, is that what you'd like us to do, or do you want us to put this on the back burner, or do you want to just say, forget it, we're not, we're not interested in considering that? This isn't going to be a two meetings and a decision. I could, I could imagine this taking us a good chunk of this year, just doing the, the number crunching and looking at different scenarios. The other thing I took away from one of the, the experiences of one of the schools that was quoted in the material that, that Dr. Button presented to the county superintendent and, and I to you at the last meeting, one of the suggestions that worked in one of the districts, I don't remember which one, because there are a number of them, and they're, they're spread all over the country, is to do, to do a lot of the hard research in-house with your staff first before starting to then push it out to the larger community. Because we don't even know at this point what some of the implications are programmatically, budgetarily, transportation-wise. So I think the last thing we want to do is go floating scenarios out to the community when we don't even have a good handle on what's this going to involve. You know, you start getting people excited about a, about an option that's a, that's a loser right from the get-go because of cost implications or whatever. So I think there was, you know, I, I think there's a lot of wisdom in doing some of the research within our own staff before we start, you know, pushing it out into larger community. We had discussed this at least once at our administrative group just, just a week or so ago, and somebody brought up the idea that at some point in the process, if we're going to go into this process, that we may want to consider using a survey as one way to reach out and get, you know, get feedback from parents. I mean, you don't get everybody respond to a survey, but you probably get more people than will actually come to a board meeting. We've heard from two parents through our board coffees who are interested in this topic, and that's great. We haven't heard anybody say, no, that's a bad idea, don't even waste your time on it, because we haven't, we haven't put it out there. But at some point, when we have a better idea of what the options are, that might be one way to, to reach out. We also talked about perhaps using the building level planning teams at each of the schools to, to discuss this, and my sense is, we may likely get different feedback from the elementary school than we might get from the middle school or high school. And that's all good, we need to put that all on the, you know, on the table and see what makes sense and how it, how it starts to sort out. But I think if we decide to engage with this topic, it's going to be, it's going to be a months-long, if not longer, process to really do it right. Some of the school districts that were referenced in that, you know, they engage in a two-year process to do this. The last thing we do is kind of rush it and implement it, and then it's a disaster. I mean, I think we need to, if we're going to do anything differently than what we're doing now, we need to be very deliberate and build consensus till, till we're ready to pull the string and not be, not be driven by, by a segment of our parent population who want this to happen yesterday. And everybody wants everything to happen right away. I don't think this is something that's going to happen quickly if we want to do it well. Just my, my thinking on the matter.
Joe, if we, if we do want to engage with this process, what's your proposal for how we move forward?
Well, I, I think if we do, we start, well, another thing that I thought of, in a way that may answer your question, we could, as a starting point, we could, and we can do it without this, but it might be a good idea to, to do this. We could have one of our committees, one of our board committees, have some discussions, start to raise some of the questions. We could set up, you know, an ad hoc committee of board members that would disband after this process is concluded, for better or for worse. You know, I have a strong feeling one way or the other, but that, that's one way, I think structurally to start off, and then start to develop a list of things we need to find out. You know, I think for better or for worse, transportation's the, you know, is the, is the 800-pound gorilla in the room. Not that that should necessarily drive an educational decision, but it's certainly something that, that has to be considered. We need to know what the cost is, and in a, you know, in a, in a tax levy cap world, it may be, and I'll underscore the word may about 18 times, it may be that we're faced with a decision of trading more transportation in order to have a later start time by cutting something else out of our budget. And that, you know, that's when the rubber will really hit the road if we can't do, do that without, without some kind of offset. So that's, you know, that's going to be a serious discussion that we can probably start to have as we enter the, the budget process, at least have it in the back of our minds. If you read that information that I provided you a couple of weeks ago, I mean, that issue's all over the map. I read about some, some school districts made this change to save money on transportation. I'm sitting there scratching my head, wondering how that's possible, but maybe if you're in a city school district with 11,000 kids, maybe there is a way to, to turn this into a, you know, a financial, with a financial upside. I'm not seeing it for us, but we haven't studied it, so I don't want to, I don't want to say it's, it's out of the question. And another one of the school districts cited in, in that, that second document said one of their ground rules going in was that this thing had to be, if they were going to go through it, it had to be cost neutral. So that was, that was an assumption that their board made is, if we can make this change and it's going to, and it can be cost neutral, great. If not, we're not, we're not going down that road. So I mean, there, there's a lot here for us, but I'd say if we, if we could maybe set up a, a board subcommittee or use one of our current committees to kind of take on that topic, and, and then we're going to have to task people in our administrative structure, Tom's going to do, he's going to wind up doing a lot of work on that, you know? Okay, so okay, Tom, here's three possible options, you got to cost this out for us. Work with, work with Durham, figure this out, let's, let's look at what the actual costs of doing things differently would be. We're going to have to engage our teachers in this conversation, we're going to have to engage our, our after-school program people, our athletic director, and it's going to have implications for other school districts too, assuming everybody, you know, all the superintendents at the county level don't jump up at our next meeting and say, yeah, we're doing it. You know, we're doing it starting in September because our time will impact when we can schedule games with other school districts. I noticed that one of the school districts made the, made the change happen because they, they wound up lighting their field so they could play games later. You know, here in the late fall, it's, it's getting dark, so there are some physical limitations to how this might impact the program. And it, there's, there's a lot here. I mean, it would be an exciting thing to study, it'd be time-consuming. I think, I think we need to go into that with our eyes open on those, on those things. So that's, that's how I, you know, set up a subcommittee, start doing our research within the school, then see what it looks like, you know, where we're at in a couple of months, what kind of answers we have. Are we ready now to take this out to the, to the larger community and say, okay, we've studied this in-house, and financially, this, these are the options that make sense to us? What do you think? How do you feel about having your elementary school kid come in at 7:30 and the high school, middle school kids come in later? Or not? How about everybody comes in at the same time? There's a lot, there are a lot of options here. We need to know what the options are before we can start putting it out there and asking people how they feel.
Yeah, so I am definitely in favor of pursuing, you know, this and researching it. I think the information that you provide us with from Suzanne Button is really tremendously helpful. A couple of things that I learned, so, you know, before I came on the board, so this was a long time ago, there was a committee that looked at this in the school district. I think, I mean, it must have been like 12 years ago or something. So I don't remember, like, I didn't know, I wasn't close to that situation, so I don't know. I remember the, the meeting where findings were presented got fairly contentious is all I remember, and, and that's all the relationship I personally had to it. But some of the things that I think this, like, we're in a better position to explore is that there were a lot of different options, and in the bottom, you know, as the summary, one of the takeaways is not, is one size doesn't fit all. I mean, there were various start times at various schools, so we're not, there isn't just like a template for like, either you do it this way or you do it that way. You either start this time and then, you know, it just seemed like there were multiple options that you could explore in terms of times for any level of school. I also thought the other thing that this document provides us with is creative solutions to some of the expected, you know, changes. So for example, like, some of the schools seem to have early study halls available for kids who still needed to come into school earlier. If the school start, the classes started later, there were earlier study halls in some places than they, or they had later study halls, you know, that there were, there were some other solutions to some other impacts that families might have. And I think that that was really important that they talked about. She talked about, or basically the primary document was from a group out of Maryland, right? About understanding family impacts, that it's not just about school and that the, well, there, that that's something we have to really understand, which I think might have been a problematic thing a dozen years ago here, was not really respecting that this will have family impacts, so you have to sort of play out and get on board with people. But I was just excited about that there are a lot of different possibilities, and I think that, you know, I don't know. I personally, I do think it has to be cost neutral. I just don't see us here in a situation of adding to our transportation costs in any really meaningful way. But I, you know, and I don't know, I think it's, I think that there's some possibility. It may, several months, we may look at it and go, actually not, but I think there's enough possibilities that I think we should pursue it.
Well, on that, regarding what you just said, for example, if, if, and I don't think we're at the point of making a decision at this point, even on those kinds of parameters, but we will as we discuss it, as we go along, but if we should decide that the only way a change could happen is if it were cost neutral. If that was a parameter that we decided, then we would probably know in a few months, sometime, you know, later in the winter, early spring, if we could come up with a scenario that was cost neutral. And if we couldn't, and that was the board's parameter, then that's, you know, end of, end of discussion, this is our parameter, we can't find out, find a way to do it without spending X amount more, so we did our due diligence, but right now it doesn't seem to be in the cards for us. Or, and they, some of these studies were talking about the school district saving money. So, I mean, if he could pull a rabbit out of his hat, you know, that certainly makes, makes it more attractive beyond the, the benefits called out in the research on, primarily student health. The other, my takeaway from reading all of this was that this research is all over the place.
Yeah.
And we heard from one of the parents that talked to us at the coffee, at least I heard, that, well, the optimal time is eight o'clock, and eight o'clock start is the optimal time. And I raised that with Dr. Button in our Q and A after her presentation, and she said, there is no optimal time called out in the research. It really is district-specific, so, she said, I, I don't buy that, that they're, you know, eight o'clock, eight o'clock's the time to shoot for. So for some school districts, that, that would work great, and for others, that wouldn't. So she said, you really need to explore this on a district-to-district basis and make decisions that are in the best interest of the kids, the school infrastructure, and certainly the family. I think the other interesting thing, not to belabor this, but the differences in parental responses to, to this change, you know, some, some of them said that, you know, they were more stressed as a result of the change, others said they were less stressed, some were more stressed in the morning, but less stressed in the afternoon, others were less stressed in the afternoon. It was like, wow, you know, it's, it's, we could have a tiger by the tail here, but I think it's, I think it's worth digging into it if, if the board wants us to, to go that way. There's certainly possibilities, we just don't have the specifics yet.
Yours first?
I just want to second the sentiment that this is definitely worth exploring. I think it's great that we've heard from parents who have taken the time to look into it and present their findings to us. This was incredibly helpful, Joe, for you to bring to us this very extensive literature review that was per- review that was performed by Suzanne Button, extremely enlightening, as well as the other material. And frankly, I feel that I was enlightened. I, I, you know, had some sort of notions based on my own school days or, you know, sort of, um, we get sort of set in our ways in terms of how we think about what a school day is, what it looks like, and, and, you know, one, I can say, I perhaps was inflexible in the way I was thinking about it, and, um, reading all of this material was really helpful. So I would welcome the opportunity for us to form some kind of ad hoc committee, and, and frankly, I think the most important people to hear from right now would be people who really see on the ground what the effects are of the school start time, you know, our, the, the school nurses, the, the, um, resource officers who are interacting with our students, our teachers, our principals, you know, really hear from all parts of the community, people who deal with the children and really see where the stress may be falling in terms of their experience of school. I, one of the things I found really compelling in this literature is not so much that it correlates to improve test scores or anything that you can kind of like quantify, but that it seems to have some, some kind of, um, relationship to wellness. And this is, I think, something that we absolutely do value in this district, and it's something that we want to endorse and promote and, and really take seriously in terms of the ability of examining policy, how it might actually create an environment where students feel happier in school, more productive in school, um, more energetic in their pursuits here. So that alone, for me, really suggests it's well worth talking about.
Second at all, third at all. It is most compelling because of the wellness issue for teens, um, so I'm in favor of moving forward with the research. The ad hoc committee, I think, is smart rather than a standing committee because there are so many tentacles, um, you know, there are financial ramifications as well as communication ramifications and all of those things.
So I agree as well. I thought the information was really helpful, and there's definitely enough to, to pursue it. Madcock Committee seems the way to go. I think all the other committees have, uh, helpful agendas. I don't know how much time they could devote to it. The only thing I would say is that before we probably bring it or start working on getting the information out to parents, we probably, that committee should put together some plan. Because it certainly makes a difference whether we're switching the elementary to earlier or if it's going the same time. I mean, everyone can feel different based on that, so I guess the first step would be to start putting this together.
I too favor the ad hoc committee. I would like, however, to say that I would like it to be a regular agenda item so that we hear from that committee every time. But I think this raises to the level of something that the board needs to hear about all the time, so that, 'cause I worry about the depth of information even in the best of circumstances when I'm listening to committee reports, honestly. And I think here we've got a tiger by the tail. I'm gonna ramble here for a minute, if you would. I noticed at the top of one of the pieces of paper that we were supplied that it says "Planning in Oniora." And I looked through the last year and a half Oniora Board minutes, 'cause I have time to do that. And I can't find it, but I believe it. And I'd just like to remind us that if that's true, I think we have a staff member here that's on the, on the Oniora Board of Education. So we may be able to, if they're ahead of us, then maybe we can get some useful information from that person. I'd love to be in that meeting if that's true. Just remember that I reminded you when we first talked about this that I claimed some little experience with this movement, although in my case it was moving in the other direction back in Red Hook in some year. And because of that, I, I was around long enough so that I not only experienced the movement, but I experienced the kind of after-effect. So I was able to kind of, if you will, debrief the students and the staff as we felt the effects of it, and I'd be happy at times to share that with you, um, 'cause I think it can have some value. And I think there's a really important question here that we all need to ask all the time, and I'm sure my colleagues ask that and the community ask that, and it's, you know, what's the purpose of doing this? We spent a lot of time here, I told you I was gonna ramble. We spent a lot of time here, rightfully so, congratulating the staff, the students, ourselves at times, on the wonderful achievements of this student body. I do, as I am sure everybody does, kind of frame their take on things from their own experience. A lot of you are going through the experience now. My wife and I have gone through the experience here at Reinbeck with the schedule that we have now. And, you know, our first child went through this system and was a commended scholar for national, I'm gonna, I'd love to hear this, I wanna hear myself say this. A commended scholar for national merit. Our second child, I will assure you, was sleep deprived. Absolutely. The joke around our house, and we still hear it in those get-togethers where everybody yucks it up. I used to drop them off in my van, and the, the joke is about the number of paper plates that piled up in our back, the back of our van, so that our second child could have something to, for breakfast at all. Once we managed to get him up and get him dressed, he graduated from here as the valedictorian of the millennia class of 2000. He got, back in the years where the maximum SAT was 1,600, he got 1,598. He got a Naval ROT scholarship and was accepted at a lot of really good colleges on the old schedule. I'm not a no vote, I'm just saying. Okay? The third child is a commended scholar as well. The fourth child was Phi Beta Kappa out of her college. My wife did a heck of a job, right? But so did we. So let's kind of keep it in mind here that what we've got is really good. We have a reason to kind of think about changing things, but be real careful about dabbling with something that's really good. That's all. So I'm done rambling.
And I'll just endorse what everybody else has said. I think it should be studied. I agree that the, uh, the ad hoc committee is the way to go, and, you know, you agree to hear how things develop.
I agree. I think it's certainly worth studying, and, uh, probably the ad hoc committee's the way to go because there's just so many tentacles, as you've said, and I'm not sure that it fits in any way or shape, so, um, I think that's the way to go. We should move forward with the study.
So as soon as I have the names of three of you who'd like to serve on that ad hoc committee, we'll, we'll get started. I don't need them tonight, but...
Spend a few more hours to get your job.
Okay, then we'll, we'll get started.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the Chancellor of Arts and School Local Assistance Plan.
Okay, thank you for, uh, I wanna thank Brett King for, for being here this evening. And I'm, I'm going to turn most of the, the discussion this evening over to Brett. This is, this is focused specifically on chancellor and as the principal of chancellor, Brett's taken a leadership role in, in responding to this. He's gone to some, uh, done some training provided by the Education Department, so he's about as, as studied up on this topic as, as anybody in the district. So Brett, if you could just kind of give us some background on, uh, how we're at, we are, where we're at at this point and the process that you've gone through to, to generate that kind of self-reflection document that we're, that we need, the board needs to approve with my recommendation and then needs to post it and follow through on the things that are, that are in there, so.
I can give you a, a general, um, kind of guideline. Like I just said, I went through a few different trainings. One's specific for Bosie's on, on just what the document is, you know, how to work with it. I was lucky enough to be interviewing with, with teams from Villarreal, Hyde Park, Red Hook, uh, who all had schools, all of the schools with, with LAPS. So we discussed that. I also went to a workshop a couple of weeks back at Sullivan, in Sullivan County, specific to working, yeah, specific to strategies to address students, you know, low socioeconomic students, so low SES students who are another subgroup. Basically, for us, we had, we had two subgroups that didn't make any, like, the annually progress on the state assessments. And I want to be clear that it's the only, kind of, the only tool used for this. There's no other, the state doesn't want any information on any in-house assessments we do, or, you know, it's based, it's based on that snapshot, third, fourth, and fifth grade state ELA and math assessments. So, uh, so for us, we had, uh, low SES students as well as, uh, students with disabilities were the two subgroups. Also, the same for all the rooms, all the districts that were in the room for that initial training. So primarily, what it is, is the state kind of looks at like a four-tier system. It's kind of a, a one-dimensional pyramid triangle, however you wanna look at it. The bottom, uh, on the bottom of the, the triangle is, are, uh, schools in good standing. The next is LAPS schools, Local Assistant Plan Schools, as you know. Then it goes to focus districts and priority schools. Focus schools or districts, however, however it works out. And basically, what focus and priority, the two most severe, a focus school is a school that got in the lowest 5% for that subgroup in the entire state. A priority school is the highest level of, of intervention from the state. We are at literally the lowest. Primarily, a priority school is our group of schools or a district that is the lowest 5% for all subgroups in the entire state. It was extremely high need schools, focus and, and priority are extremely high need schools or districts. So basically, as it turns out, um, you know, a LAPS is primarily a self-evaluative tool, and that's really how we looked at it with my staff. We started, um, you know, really started with me sitting with, with our curriculum director and superintendent, kind of going over the process, going over some of the data. And then when we started really getting into, when I started really attacking the, the LAPS itself, primarily, I kind of sat and, the way it works is they organize it, as you look through the document, they organize it with, through six tenets. The first tenet is actually district leadership. That's not part of the LAPS process, so that's why you don't see it there. So LAPS, uh, tenet two through six, focus on very specific things. So two is school leadership. Tenet three is curriculum development. Tenet four is teacher practice decisions in the classroom. And then five and six, focus on community engagement and student social, emotional well-being and development in the building. And under each one of those tenets, they organize it just like we organize it with the teachers. It's a hand rating, highly effective, effective, developing and ineffective. And what they, uh, basically ask you to do is go through the document and self-reflect on how you're doing, how you think you're doing in all those tenets and all those subcomponents. There's usually three or four, maybe five in each tenet. And if you rate yourself effective or below in any of those sub, the, the subcomponents, you're asked to write, you know, discuss action plans, resources you're using in the district, and certainly PD opportunities. So you'll see that at the bottom of each one of those, uh, those pages as well. So primarily, we kind of started rating ourselves. We started smaller, and what we kind of decided to do over the course of six or seven weeks was, was go add into larger subgroups within the building. And then throughout the process, I certainly kept checking in with district leadership, Joe and, and Marvin, and we kind of, the three of us kind of just went through, as, as I kind of went through certain tracks of, of, of the document, finally getting to the point of the one that you have in front of you now. So kind of going back really quick. Myself, Ms. Lox, were initial kind of school leadership that, that, that went through and just sort of kind of organizing data, taking information, taking documents that supported certain things we were doing, and started really looking at, how would we rate ourselves in some of these, these areas? Then from there, we kind of went a little broader with, um, kind of a lot of the service teams. So we brought in teachers, AAS providers, special ed teachers, general ed teachers that worked in inclusive environments, things like that. And, and I mention AAS because, you know, a lot of the students that we're addressing here are also in that kind of program as well. You know, they're getting a lot of academic intervention services, um, whether it be because they, they score low on the state assessments, or they get it through, you know, through CSC, through their IEP, that kind of thing. So we felt it was important to include that, that subgroup of my staff because they're the ones working with us to kind of create this data, and they should kind of look at this data to kind of, you know, address what we need to do in the building. So that was kind of the next level. Then we kind of started working on, kind of talking about what the most important action plans are, 'cause honestly, you could probably, and we were directed by Bosie's, by the way, you know, to try to keep it, prioritize those kind of action steps. You don't want 47 action steps, even though you might be doing 47 different action steps to kind of get to that point. You know, prioritize the things that are on like the, you know, the top of your list, the things you're working on, the things you really wanna work on and intend on working on. So we focused on, on those. And, uh, like I said, once we kind of got a, a bit of a draft there, in addition to sharing that with, with Joe and Marvin, then we brought our grade-level chairs and had the conversation about, similar to what I'm kind of laying out for you, like what, what the document is. We've been talking about this since opening day as a staff, just that we have this, that this document exists and that we've been working towards it. And then asked the grade-level chairs to kind of distribute it to their constituents. And the good thing about that is, you know, pretty much everyone in my building is, is addressed by the, the group that is in, you know, the, the members of the grade-level chair, everyone other than, in addition to the classroom teachers, special ed teachers, specials. So we were able to kind of really get everybody in the loop. And then from there, we actually brought it to, um, a presentation at a faculty conference a couple of weeks after it was distributed to everyone. And in that time, throughout those entire six or seven weeks, I was getting a lot of feedback, kind of organizing it that way. You know, I had some people who, who felt I was a little hard on, on myself or, or, you know, some of the things we were doing in rating. For example, tenet two is specific really to decisions I make on the things like that, and, uh, in some cases, they, they really, it, it really helped to, to look at this overall, the kind of the, under the, the general umbrella, how we looked at this document was, regardless of why we were, you know, we're doing this, going through this process, the process should be looked at as something self-reflective. And, and really, um, I think my staff was amazing in understanding that, like, let's get past the fact that it's, it's state test scores. We know they've been, you know, the, the test has been changed every year for years and years, kids that were with, with no disabilities and no, um, you know, kind of barriers are sitting down, kids who used to get fours and now getting twos because they just changed the test and things. So imagine what that does to some of the highest need students in our buildings, and those two subgroups are who's identified here. So we understood the reality of what it, what it, what it means and what it is, but I, I felt really supported by, by my staff and in the conversations we had in the idea that, "Hey, let's just look at what we're doing. Can we do better? We can always do better." There's certain places where we rated, if you went through there, I think highly effective, just some highlights on a side note, um, you know, tenet four, five, and six were places we kind of really felt we were doing a really good job. And, um, you know, I think I even mentioned it to, to Joe or Marvin at some point early on, this idea that when, you know, you kind of think about, and I always felt we do a great job in my building, this idea that if, if you, if you focus on the students that are CSC students, okay, students with IEPs, disabilities, um, we have how they, how they do on state assessments that is, is given to everyone for the most part. And that's one little data point. The other data point is their educational experience in our building 180 days a year as they go through kindergarten through fifth, and then, you know, proceed to go into the middle school and high school. And, uh, I had to just take this opportunity to mention it because I think when I really sat down and talked to more and more people, I, I felt that everyone who's part of this process felt the same way, that, you know, there's always things to work on, but one thing, and it came out when we kind of went through the document, the one, one of the things that we do very well is create a positive educational environment for those kids who do struggle. And, um, we're realists, and we understand that there are certain things that are tougher for them and certain things that aren't, and they have, they have strengths in their individualities, just like every other student in the building. And it was, you know, one of, one of the many good things that came out of this process was the fact that we all really did feel that we were coming together and doing that as a school community. So, um, you'll notice, that's one of the places where we really ranked ourselves, you know, where a couple of those highly effective, uh, things pop up. Two kind of areas, page seven and page 10, that's, uh, tenet 2.5 and 3.4, I think were the big next steps for us. I think they have to do with, um, and we're right at the beginning of it, so the timing of kind of looking at this document and reflecting on how we're doing it, I think, I think is perfect, meaning putting systems in place to kind of, uh, to develop kind of really data-driven decisions and, and have that effect where we deploy staff and how we place students and what services we can provide. And I think over the last two years, we're starting to chip away at that. And, um, I have to say, a lot of it has to do with not only that, that, that team we brought in, but, um, I, I have to give props to, to Ms. Lox, who, who is a big part of this process, and I was, but she kind of really sat with me as, we did this together as a team from the beginning to the end, I think. And a lot of the next steps that we're putting in there, the places we found ourselves developing, have to do with including a lot of the data and a lot of the information we do have that, that maybe we didn't have three or four years ago, that we do have ongoing in my building, and then utilizing it to make better decisions on how we serve these, these students. I think it's a cultural shift. I think there's, uh, there's a lot of reasons why that cultural shift needs to happen. I think there's a, there's a lot of reasons why that cultural shift needs to happen, and I think the needs of these students is one of them. So that was one place we developed, we felt we were really developing. And another was, and we just started this conversation actually this summer, and then certainly when we first started the school year, so it was also kind of timely. The idea of kind of taking interdisciplinary areas and injecting them into our units. So for example, if you think about specials, and that's a huge lift we're doing this year is, you know, finally really including the specialist teachers, arts, you know, music, phys ed. Now that we have our units finished, within the grades, let's say, you know, fifth grade is done with at least planning out their entire year and making their units align with the common core, that next step is getting those units in the hands of those specialists to kind of support the stuff they're doing. And I've been lucky enough, and I think Mr. Krepp shares my sentiment, because he's been in the room with me, we've sat in rooms with our also consultant, the two of us, the entire specialist teachers, and they were chomping at the bit to kind of get their hands on this stuff so that they can support it. And even just the conversations we were having around there was, were just extremely rigorous. And, you know, and there's several new people on that team since I've been there, and I was just amazed to hear that they're on that same page. They were kind of waiting for us to reach out to them, and we had. And I think, I mentioned that because I think, you know, on page 10, it's one of the 3.4 focuses on that, and we are developing in that area. We can only kind of get better. So the idea was, we kind of go through that process, we take a look at it. Ultimately, we got it to you a little bit earlier so that you have some time to really look at it. Obviously, any questions you have right now, but certainly, you know, I would hope that the door's still open, whether you go through Joe or directly to me, to kind of, if you have questions, when you get a chance to look deeper at it, even after tonight, feel free to do so. I know, you know, it doesn't have to be on our website until the 21st of this month, I believe, which is right before the next meeting. I actually did, you know, on a side note, talk to BOSI's about that fact, because I have schedule there. You know, and if we need more time to adopt it, that's doable, you know, the extra day or so, she said wasn't really much of an issue, we felt we needed to discuss it. But I figured, once I left that meeting, got a chance to talk to Joe, that tonight would be the night we want to get in front of you, so you had some time to look at it. So it's kind of a bit in a nutshell, there's a lot more, but how we went about it.
Thanks Brett for outlining all of that. I've got a couple of questions. So it said in some of the early part of this literature that for reward schools, there's grant money for, you know, jobs well done. Is there any money coming from the state to help with professional development on this front for LAP schools?
Not that I know specifically, and I have to be honest, maybe that's something, because I figured there'd probably be a bunch of next steps. Marvin Kreppson and I are going to sit down and kind of go through some of this stuff as well, and I can bring some of the questions that I may not have answers to, and that might be one of them. Jen, the lady who did the initial workshop with us at BOSI's, did mention funding for high need districts, things like that, but didn't get specific that if there was like literally a pool of money specific for LAP schools. To be honest, I would think focus and priority schools are probably going to take the majority of that, but it's definitely worth looking into. And, you know, the good thing is, the things that we have in there that are like next steps, you know, our resources, district resources, I think for the most part, that maybe we wanted to, for example, responsive classroom and kind of getting people up to speed, you know, that's a little bit of a cost thing that we may want to look at. And that's primarily because we just have so many newer staff that wasn't through the process. In fact, I think I was physically the last person trained, and it was in like five days over the summer, my first summer here. But other than that, it's all stuff that we're able to fund, you know, without having to worry about kind of outside funding, things like that. In fact, even the grant, the second year grant with the RSF with Rick, I think has a lot, you know, is in here somewhere specifically, in one of those kinds of things, teach practice as kind of an action step, you know, that a lot that we were in our second year of doing. So I can look into that, though, I can answer about it.
My other question for you is, I noticed in a number of places, your, part of your action plan is release time for teachers to work at grade level or, but my question really is, if you're talking about this population of kids, don't they thrive with consistency of the teacher in front of them? So if you're pulling their teachers away from them, is that sort of counterproductive? Or, you know, is there something we can do that provides time without taking time from the kids, which is, should be our focus?
Yeah. Well, and most of that, anywhere you may have seen that, really referenced mostly to the fact that three or four days a year, when we have the consultant there, they're freed up to do that. It also, and I could have been more specific, it also, you know, references like Flying Squad and some of those things we have in the middle, during the week on a regular basis. That's the catch 22. If you're doing it too often, then yeah, it really is counterproductive. You know, one of the things sometimes, special ed teachers decide to stay back on some of those days and stay with their kids. You know, as a group, we always offer to free them up, but that's another option. Sometimes we do go that route for that exact reason, the consistency for that group. Luckily, a lot of times when we're trying to get, you know, three or four subs on a regular basis, and this is one of those years where early enough, we have all the dates for that specific consultant, which I think is the fault of when we free those people up, we actually have consistent subs that we use. It's not always exact, but you know, if we needed five, usually three or four of them are, you know, the same. We try to, there's a lot of teachers that really reach out and have partnerships with subs, so that does help a little bit. We're very aware of, over and above kind of those three or four days a year, there are other things, and we really try to minimize the amount of time out of the classroom. I think we've actually gotten better at that. I think it used to happen a lot more often. You know, in the past, we've pulled back on some of those things, but it's a reality of the game, unfortunately. Like, so for example, I think of some of the examples I gave aside, you know, things that are specific to this, I sit down and do a formal observation with a teacher, and one of the things that pops up is, you know, maybe conferencing with students. You know, we still want to try to leave it open that I can go through BOSI's and maybe send them to a half-day workshop or a full-day workshop. And that's also one of the caveats of that statement in there. But the best answer to that question, I think, is the fact that we are always looking for other opportunities and ways to do that. You know, and there are newer ways we've been able to chip at that. I know it's small, but for example, the six hours after school that are kind of added, that's kind of, lack of a better term, it's kind of six free hours that we know are coming. You know, in fact, we were able to work on some of that, knowing it was coming well in advance. We did two dates, right off the bat, in September, they knew what two dates were, and then we have kind of two floating hours that they'll let us know when they can use. And knowing that was coming, we were able to kind of decide, hey, we won't free you up for this, or, you know, you know, maybe we'll utilize those two hours for curriculum work, rather than saying, hey, we'll add an extra day with the consultant, things like that. So we are always trying to find that balance. Sometimes it's kind of the nature of the beast in order to get kind of the best information to staff. Also, if we notice a critical mass of a group of people, let's say through a formal observation or whoever, that kind of have a similar need, you know, there's been times where we've decided, rather than sending those people out during the day, you know, it's worth working with Richard or Marvin to kind of find funding to do something during a superintendent conference day instead. So I think we just try to balance that the best we can.
Thank you.
Well, yes, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned the extra hours, because we just had that first day on November 6th, so it's really going to support the work you're doing on this.
Yeah, so, you know, I just want to, I appreciate the comment. You know, this is based on one particular data point, which is one test. But I do appreciate that you and the teachers are using the tool of self-reflection to kind of think about what the data, you know, what this is all about and how to improve. And that's always a good thing to do, absolutely. And those are highest need students, you would know anyway, probably. So a good opportunity there to use that. I would just say that, you know, at various times, this board, the whole, you know, the district leadership in many ways has cautioned about not teaching the test. So, you know, a concern about the implementation of all these reform items is that they kind of can start putting the squeeze on, so you might be tempted to do test prep, because that's how you get better, whether it's the 36% of kids in the whole population, or the 14% of kids, special ed kids, you know. So I just think that we all have to be cautioned about that, because these are the like practical ways that the state starts putting that pressure on. So I appreciate you handling it in a way that really is educationally sound, but that, you know, always to keep that.
Well, I have to say, you know, I think that philosophy you share by really everyone in my building, and I can't take credit for that. I think, you know, the tests were here waiting for I showed up. And on top of it, it really does, I think the culture in my building does match that philosophy, that there's ways, you know, you could teach children how to write a three paragraph essay without practicing just that for, you know, four weeks straight, right before the test, so that they get it. And just to add to that, you know, for me, I'm not going to lie, 10 years before I came to this district, I worked in an environment, and some principals I worked for did do that, like, you know, that idea of, hey, the whole month of January, we're not teaching math. That extra block is ELA, and we're going to do, you know, day one, a day two, a day three, we're going to go over it, then we're going to do a day one, day two, day three, and there's like a, you know, four weeks of that. And I've seen what that does to the building, I've seen what it does to the morale, the children don't want to be there. And it just increases more anxiety about a test that can make them anxious to begin with. So, you know, I have to say, I feel like I'm supported around this table in that philosophy. I'm glad, you know, you articulated it, Deidre, and I thank you for that. And really, my teachers do too. So it wasn't that hard to kind of get past some of that, you know, and it would have been great to be able to spend days with my entire staff and go through this, but I felt getting the subgroups together, even that, and then ultimately having the whole staff at a faculty conference, I feel that the, that we did share that philosophy and that this is a good tool to just see what we're doing better. And yeah, test prep is just not the way to go.
All right.
Thank you Brett.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, again, any questions? If we move on to work committee reports?
We have two, curriculum and audit.
Curriculum, that's mine. We had a very in-depth discussion about APPR and our assessments. By state regulation, we needed to have a discussion about testing as it relates to the APPR. So a little bit of background, so that we can all appreciate the advent of the MAPS test. The district had been looking for a tool that was evaluative for educational programs, academic planning, student development, and MAPS is such a tool that was created for that purpose. Unfortunately, at the same time, it also became identified from SED as a test that could be used to feed into APPR and teacher evaluation. It was not at all what the test was designed for, but SED being as persuasive as they are, was able to convince the NWEA who created the MAPS test that it should be an evaluative test. That being said, the district still moved forward in using the MAPS test really for student achievement purposes, not teacher evaluation purposes. So I've outlined a little bit what counts as the state 20 versus the local 20 in the APPR, as it's been negotiated with our teachers now. There may be a new APPR down the road, and we as a district feel, Marvin and Joe specifically feel very strongly that MAPS should continue to be used, even though, you know, SED says no K through two testing, we don't have state tests for K2, we'll never have state tests for K2. We will continue to use MAPS to see how our students are growing year on year. You know, as Brett just outlined for us, it's important so that we know that our kids can get through in a successful way. So Joe can flesh out more if you've got some more specific questions that aren't outlined in the notes. We then moved on to the furor over the fact that the regions were taking history out of education. That's also not happening here. History is alive and well, and Reinbeck will continue to be. What the region is doing is changing the five-regent requirement for standard regent graduation to a four-plus-one model, which allows for the new pathways program, which is all in your packet, the backup information. So the four will continue to be a social studies exam, a math exam, an ELA exam, and a science exam. The plus-one sort of remains to be seen, but it looks like it's going to be career in technical education, STEM, arts, biliteracy, and humanities courses. They haven't really given us guidance on what those courses are going to be, but hopefully in January, we'll have more feedback on that. Which brought us to the conversation about literature and the Common Core, and our concern that with the focus on nonfiction texts, that the joy of reading literature is going to go out of our curriculum, and that's not the intention of the Reinbeck School District. We are committed to providing a deep and well-rounded curricula, and we're looking for ways that alternate courses like social studies and science can bridge that nonfiction coursework, so that it frees up our English teachers to continue to explore multiple genres in English. Marvin reports that the new curriculum documents for chancellor are still being reviewed. He's hopeful that we'll continue to be able to meet our date in early December to review them before we bring them to the full board, but he'll let us know. I asked about the extended response for science and math grant, which Brett referenced, the grant through RSF with Rick Campbell of Bard College. The, Marvin and Joe are waiting for reports from Rick Campbell. And Brett, I know, I think it was last Saturday, the teachers all met with Rick for another pretty lengthy segment of their training, and it seems to be going really well. It's still collaborative, lesson planning and peer review. As soon as the teachers and Brett and Rick put together a report for Marvin and Joe, we'll be able to find out whether they want to continue with the program or how they want to build it up. Last thing is that our governor has signed a bill mandating all high school students be trained in CPR, which is tremendous, but I'd like to point out, it's an unfunded mandate. We are in a great position to, I'm sorry?
There are no more unfunded mandates.
Right.
Come on, there aren't any.
Right, read my list. We're in a great position to be able to teach these courses in Reinbeck, but we're waiting for SED to let us know whether or not we are providing basic training or CPR certification, how frequently classes need to happen, et cetera, et cetera. And that's it. It was a good meeting.
Exhausting.
It was, but invigorating.
Yeah, so maybe, I just want to clarify about the assessments piece, because it doesn't talk about K2 in the minutes. So we do do MAPS testing for K2. So, you know, I guess, you know, I'll just say that I do get concerned about using certain kind of standardized tests at the kindergarten level particularly. There's been a lot out there written, a lot of school districts, you know, and teachers pushing back against that kind of testing for kindergartners. I don't know enough about what those tests look like, but, you know, the other thing that's important to realize about testing, and, you know, let's face it, I mean, this letter from Julia Ruffel-Bayer, the assistant commissioner, about, that says the amount of testing should be the minimum necessary to inform effective decision-making, I think is, you know, like a crock, like it's just really offensive that she's saying that as they produce this regime of testing. But, you know, teachers do their own assessments in classrooms that aren't like from products that we purchased or from the state. So I just get concerned about that. Like, that is a piece of testing that we should know exists, right? Teachers have tests. So I'll just, you know, I don't know, you know, at some point, if the curriculum committee wants to discuss specifically what testing looks like in kindergarten in particular, and maybe discuss with Marvin what the purposes of testing in kindergarten are. And secondly, I guess, you know, I mean, it's all ridicul, I mean, it's outrageous what the state does, you know? Do all these tests, make them in the APPR, but now reduce your tests. But they did ask for, the question was, you know, to look over your testing and see if there was any test that should be removed. So I'm just curious, were any assessments eliminated? Did we do a review process? And were any assessments removed? Because that seemed to be the purpose of that letter.
Yes, yes, we did, and no, we didn't.
So no? So, I'm just curious, were any assessments eliminated? Did we do a review process? And were any assessments removed? Because that seemed to be the purpose of that letter.
Yes, yes, we did, and no, we didn't.
So, no assessments removed. So, just a thought for the curriculum committee or schools to think about, are the assessments the teachers are doing on their own? Because, you know, I will say, from my own parenting experience, that there is a certain age when you're like, wow, the kids are getting tested like all the time, and they're not state tests, and they're not tests from a product, they're tests the teachers are giving them. So, again, just, it's a big issue, testing, but I would just suggest that we may not be looking at the whole picture of assessment if we're just looking at MAPS. Or maybe MAPS is replacing a lot of other assessments, I don't know. I just, I'm just going to, just note my concern about that.
Well, the others kind of spin on that, that piece of the topic is what kind of assessments, what kind of teacher-made assessments that teachers are using. And we've had this discussion this past summer with our teachers' association, within the context of talking about the APPR, you know, going forward, and one of the things that we discussed and we intend to do this year is to bring some people in to work with teams of teachers to talk about teacher-made assessments so that they're appropriate, that they're, that they do what they say they're going to do. Because, to be honest, unless teacher preparation has changed drastically in recent years, I don't think schools of education are turning out teachers who are particularly skilled in writing their own assessments in terms of the type of results that you want to get out of taking the time in your classroom to assess students. I think we can help our teachers and ultimately our students by doing more to train those teachers in-house. Again, I'm not faulting the teachers for not coming with an extensive background in assessment development, but they just aren't getting that level of training in teacher education programs. So, we're talking about taking that under our own wing and starting to do more of that in-house. So, regardless of which teachers give assessments, for what purpose, at what level, will increase the likelihood that they'll be writing good assessments and that they will be, they'll be administered and getting the results that we want to get out of that time, because all the time we take assessing kids is less time we're instructing kids. The last thing I'd like to mention is on the second page of the memo from SED where it says in bold print, "Teaching not testing is the core of the region's reform agenda." And I have a hard time reading this letter and listening to Brett King talk about what he just talked about, if in fact, testing is not part of the region's reform agenda. It clearly is the focus in this state, and to your point about test prep, the message that's being sent statewide is get those test scores up. And you're right, we have to remind ourselves every step of the way that that's not the most important thing, that we'll write all the plans we need to do and we'll do all the compliance we need to do, but need to make sure we don't lose sight of what our mission is. And our mission isn't testing kids, isn't generating test scores for the sake of generating test scores. I mean, I think that line is the most ironic line I've read in any correspondence from the State Education Department in years, because that just isn't the case, so rant over.
Can I just add to that? I think that's a place where studying literature helps us, because there's something perfectly Kafkaesque about having the sort of edict come to us from the State Education Department that we must both publish our local assistance plan on our website next to the statement that we're, you know, sort of, we're supposed to be examining ourselves to see if we're testing inappropriately per State Education Department's, you know, new position on this. So, we're going to have both of these statements side by side, which are completely contradictory, right? I mean, the bottom line is that they are placing pressure on local school districts based on test scores, and I find it completely, really Kafkaesque to receive a letter like this, to the effect that somehow we might perhaps perniciously be overzealous in our testing and not concerned for the kind of like higher goal of teaching, so.
And I would be remiss here, before we move on, as the former social studies teacher, not to raise the alert that allowing the students to opt out under any circumstance from one of the regions that has to do with history, in particular the global studies, is, you know, just as we're worried about the crawl and the balance between fiction and nonfiction, there's obviously a crawl, and maybe a necessary crawl from the social sciences towards the STEM area, I understand, and occupation. But in a world where we've all lived, or at least I lived through a mistake that was tragic because we didn't understand the people of Vietnam, and recently where we made what appears to be another tragic mistake because we didn't understand the people of Iraq and the customs, to in essence say to our students statewide, but you don't really have to take a state test. I mean, there's a message there that says, maybe it's important, maybe it isn't. It is a credit, by the way, and we heard this, our superintendent and Marvin and the social studies department, that they're not, they're going to dig in their heels, they're going to, they're not going to give up as if there was any chance that that would happen. But in that same meeting we did here, and we've just talked about it here, that all of a sudden from on high comes these mandates, these orders, to say to us, we don't care whether you like it or not, you have to do it, you're going to do it. Now, some of those are politically motivated, it may end in 2016 or thereafter, but I'm just going to raise the alert again. Yes, it's alive and well now, but let's be careful again. I guess I said that twice tonight.
So, the curriculum committee is going to possibly look at the MAPS testing, especially for kindergartners. Something that, one of my sessions at the convention that was talked about was, students need to be prepared and learn how to take these tests on the computers. And I'm thinking of these kindergartners taking these tests, you know, and I don't know how much time we prepare them to learn how to take them. An example they gave was, you know, they had to answer a question in a box, and the students answered in the box, not realizing the box would go on and on, and didn't answer well. So, just learning how the process works. So, I don't know, you know, we have these little kindergartners taking these tests on the computers, I don't know how much time we also have to give to that. Kind of just speaks to the whole thing of, you know, why are we testing these kindergartners and how much time we're putting into all this and who we're getting out of it. Anything else for curriculum? Okay, audit made?
All right, so, this meeting was a meeting scheduled to review the draft audit of the district's 2013 and 2014 financial statements. The final audit will be presented to the full board, the date that's going to be worked out between Tom and our auditor. So, you know, to cut to the chase, overall, our auditor expressed no concerns about the district's financial position, the district used appropriate internal controls and accepted accounting principles, the auditor received all documents and necessary information from the district, he had no trouble receiving information from the business office. We spent time, you know, I'm going to go through this fairly quickly, it's good for people to have an outline of what some of the highlights will be, but he will also be here at a meeting to answer questions directly, he might be the best person to answer the specific questions. But discussed a little bit about sort of the difference between how we do budgeting as a board of education and financial documents we look at, and then the role of an auditor to look at all kinds of other issues such as fixed assets, accrued liabilities, and make sure the financial statements as a package show the district to be sound financially. But he highlighted some places where there might be some questions over, say for example, the post-employment benefits liability, that'll be a part, when you look at the audit, that might look like a very big number. It is a very big number because it represents our liabilities for all retirees in the future. But for budgeting purposes, what that looks like any year to year and maybe a couple of years forward is what's most important for us. Again, he also looked, highlighted, our debt service interest is larger, you'll note, these notes might be useful to you when you actually get the audit, because then you'll see, because we did refinance a bond that was not callable yet. I think it was important to, he noted that now and in the past, auditors have reviewed our federal grants as a single audit, but that, looks like that might be stopping because we don't receive, the rules are changing for that requirement, we don't receive enough in federal aid to warrant it in the future. There are, you will notice in the audit, there are a couple of different like letters to us, the reason why it's not like, you might go, well, why are there like this letter to the board and then this letter to the board right after each other? Well, they're requirements that, they're auditing requirements that are specific, answering specific needs. So, you know, the first one is a discussion of accounting principles, and he had no difficulty of getting information, and our accounting principles are sound that we use, our assumptions are reasonable and consistent year to year. So, there's like one letter that says that. There's a management letter, and that management letter does note three issues here around estimating depreciation of assets, about the lunch program, money that's due to the lunch program, we've talked about that, and about the extra classroom funds and how they're managed, particularly at chancellor, none of which really impact overall the financial position of the district. So, overall, you know, it was a positive audit, he raised no concerns. I thought he does a good job explaining, so if you do have questions about the audit when he comes, it'll be a good time to do it, and that's where we are. Any questions?
I know that there was some concern by members of the audit committee about the timeliness of the production of the draft audit document by Toski, and I'm wondering what the committee's feeling about it is now that we've actually reviewed the draft document.
You know, I mean, we made it clear to him that, I think, you know, that we weren't happy that it was late, that in the future, he suggested that it wouldn't be late, you know, there are no consequences in terms of state ed. In fact, I think it's important to note that the business office can send the final audit to the state without board approval, so, you know, I think that's all we can do. I mean, he seems to do good work, so that's, I'm satisfied with that. I don't know if anyone else wants to comment.
Am I wrong, but was it late last year also?
Yeah.
I feel like the same thing, that we were told it wouldn't be late, so I don't, I mean, he does good work, but.
He mentioned something about they were trying something new this summer, and it didn't work out, whatever that meant. But he definitely took a portion of blame for the work being late, and I think Tom had expressed our displeasure prior to the meeting, so he came fully prepared to apologize and promise lots of things, so next year we'll see.
So, maybe, Tom, could you, like, when is the final audit going to be? Is it?
Well, that's a good question, because even on Monday, we were asked a couple of questions, like updating the attorney a letter. So, between the time that we did the first letter earlier this summer and now, our attorneys have to say no lawsuits have been brought up against the district, some of those type of things. And we are currently comparing the ST3 that was handed into the state versus what's in the audit report. Christine and Toski are doing this, so they're finding some minor little changes, but I would think, I would hope by the end of this week, we should be prepared, I would think about by the end of this week, we should be ready for a final that can be submitted.
And right now, our plan is to have him here at our November 25 meeting.
That's correct.
Has he said that he would be?
I haven't heard from him. I was expecting something after the meeting, but I didn't hear anything, and if I remember correctly, his wife was having, why, he couldn't be here tonight, so I was, kind of wanted to get that behind him, and I was going to approach him tomorrow or Thursday to confirm for our next board meeting.
We all recall that to no fault of any of our staff, this happened last year as well. We hadn't said, actually, we're sitting here watching, I was wondering where the heck is?
Oh, I thought it was Wednesday. So, when?
The year is young.
And I just want to thank Tom and Christine and everybody else in the business office for, you know, the work you do yearly to have this kind of an audit, and the work you do to supply the auditor with the information that he needs.
Thank you. I'll help my staff, I appreciate that.
Anything else for audit? Okay, let's move on to our review of the 2014 ISBA convention.
How do you want to do that, Joe?
I'll just say that I have been terribly busy, so I haven't had time to really reflect on the learning sessions that I went to, so I will provide that information in the near future, but anyone else would like to chime in?
And we could always reschedule this for a later meeting when everybody's ready. We had a lot of reports this evening.
We did.
It was, I will only say that the sessions that I went to were, I think, to a session very, very high quality. I loaded up my shopping cart with stuff connected with, especially with communication and digital communication, so I found them to be very helpful, just so the, so the community knows we're spending their money wisely. We did split up the session, so there were very few of us at the same session with a couple of exceptions. But, again, I think it was time and money well spent. I learned a lot, I think, in discussing that with those of you who went, I think you can share that impression with me. So, I can just say we actually discussed this tonight, I think that's. But I'm the chair, and if we want to, I know I'm having my secretary download the, you know, the handouts from the sessions that I went to, she hasn't finished that yet, so.
We can revisit this at a later date if you wish, or we can slot through it tonight.
It's fine with me to wait. I'm okay waiting.
We visit it next meeting.
All right.
All right, so, good news?
So much good news. I'm just going to take the swim part, because I know there's some soccer parents that might want to talk about that. But I'm sure you read on the Twitter feed that not only did the girls varsity swim team with four girls going to sectionals come in 10th out of 15 big teams, which is incredible, but Kate Bergen was named the 2014 Section 9 Swimmer of the Year, and they did a remarkable job. They just, they were incredible. I wish I'd been there to see it. Sounded really exciting.
Well.
Come on.
You're dying to tell.
Well, there's very good news in terms of the boys varsity soccer team, which has had a tremendous season, and as we all know, is going on to be one of the final four this weekend in Middletown, and it truly has been extraordinary to see the continuity of this team over the years with Coach Weisenthal and the presence of. this team over the years with Coach Weisenthal and the presence of athletes who've built that team over the years, they're cheering on the athletes who are competing now, and it's really a moving, moving thing to have watched unfold over the season. So wonderful support from the community, people driving all the way down to Long Island to watch that game and cheer on the athletes. So everyone will try to support them in their final push this weekend. Really, really good news.
I just like to give a shout out to Kathy Cassens for the incredible photographs from that, from that win. Wonderful.
I would also like to point out that I was watching via Twitter, getting some updates on the score, so that was really beneficial, so.
Picture of the purple bus.
The bus.
The Stupichay was busy eating in the midst of the madness. It was fantastic.
Mark and I had the opportunity yesterday to attend the annual veterans' recognition, which is always moving. I wandered in because I wander on aimlessly as a retiree, on behalf of all of us, and had breakfast with some of, some of the people who are my friends, others of them, I took the liberty of welcoming them on behalf of the board, which I hope is all right. And so many of them said how special this is. You know, I think the, the epitome is that, I won't use his name, but you may know, prominent local citizen lost his wife at the end of last week, and showed up yesterday, and I walked up and I said to him, wow, this is something, he said, I just had to be here, this is one of the things that you have to attend if you're a veteran. I just walked away and said, yeah, you want to be the community center? So it was, it was pretty special, as it always is.
Okay, any other good news? Just mention that the state technology bond passed this past week, and so from what I'm reading, we'll be getting $277,000 in technology aid, although I am disappointed that that's in the bottom 10% of the amounts that are being distributed across the state, so, but that's another issue for later.
I'm disappointed only 40-something percent of the voters voted to approve that, and 20-some-odd percent apparently never turned the ballot over to vote on it at all. So that, that passed with far less than 50% of the vote.
Well, I will say, without getting into detail, there were other reasons to vote against it than to not support technology spending. The, the language provides for, the money could be spent in public and non-public schools is what the ballot language was, and then there was a critique that we should be fully funding schools annually, budgetarily, not through asking the citizens, through referenda. So I think there were complex reasons why people could vote against it, that people didn't turn it over, votes another issue, but.
That's what concerns me, I think there were plenty of good reasons not to vote yes on a bond that, to purchase equipment that's essentially going to be obsolete in five years, it were bonding for 20 years for that, and I think that was a serious flaw along with the other things that you mentioned. I'm disappointed that it passed, and there were 20-some-odd percent of the people out there who didn't vote yes or no.
Right.
That's disappointing to me.
Yeah, yeah.
Other good news? Okay, we'll move on to old business.
Mine just concerns that Dr. Julia Raphael-Bayer, who keeps sending us letters. Did we ever finish the letter and send?
We met, I have to redraft the letter.
Okay.
On Friday or so ago, and I, the way we left.
Actually, it was right before the last board meeting.
Yeah, the way, the way we left was that I was going to redraft and address some of the concerns, so, no, we've not forgotten about that.
Because you can, you could add some more things.
Yes.
You said it soon, we'll have to publish and have it down.
Yeah, right.
You know, Pistolary now.
I do have a couple of old businesses. Two things that I wanted to, to bring up, actually, three things. I would like us, if we can, sooner rather than later, to set our December Coffee with the Board date, just so I have adequate time to, to get the word out, as I mentioned in my note to you. Last time we had talked, we were looking about, on that topic, we were looking at the December.
16th.
16th. Mark can't make it that day, at least as of the last polling of you.
I will not be able to.
Okay, so I don't know whether we're going to look for another date when everybody had the opportunity to be there. I just need to know what you, what you want to do.
I'm still good on both morning and afternoon.
I think on morning, but I'm not sure about evening.
What is the evening time?
7:30, 8:30.
So I can only do morning, then?
You can only do morning. And Deirdre, you said you can only do evening?
I can do morning.
But not evening?
And I'm 50/50.
So should we hold them that day?
Sure.
Would that work?
Yes.
Do you probably have any?
We'll report to you.
I'm sorry to have to miss it.
Yes, I bet.
You can send Mary anyway.
Yeah, send Mary, she's great at these things.
We'll tweet to you.
Yeah, that's right. Send pictures.
You can FaceTime.
All right, so, just to stay on the schedule, because I recall, the 16th, there weren't a lot of other dates with concerts and other concerts, so if we want to do it in December, I think that, Scotty, I just want to make sure everybody else listens.
Just remind me, what's the morning start time?
9 to 10.
Okay.
Okay, and I'll be, you know, I'll be reminding you as we get closer, but I want to be able to get a, save the date out to, out to folks on that. The other thing is, I wanted to try to pin the board down to a date for the policy-required board sexual harassment training. I listed the dates when, I didn't list dates when I knew people weren't going to be at a board meeting, I just need to give Marvin, you know, a heads up on that, and we do like 6 to 7:15 right before a board meeting, and then coming to the board meeting. So I had called out December 9, January 13, February 10, February 24's possibilities.
All fine with me, too.
I go for January 13. I'll just put it out there.
Yeah, I'd say not December.
Okay, I'm just putting the possibility.
We just made another December date, so.
Should we go for January 13? And just roll the dice and see if that still works for 7 people? Okay, that's good. Thank you very much. Also, one, a third thing I wanted to mention, I had a very nice chat with, with our new mayor, Heath Tortorella, at the Veterans Day Ceremony on Monday, and we talked quite a bit about reviving the Rhinebeck Collaboration. So he said he was very interested. I know I had talked a few months back with Elizabeth Spinsy, and she had expressed her, her interest, so now that the municipal elections are, are over and that, that's kind of settled down, I'm going to reach out to both of them and actually calendar a date. I don't recall off the top of my head which one of you is the, okay, you were the last time around, so we can talk about when you would be available and not available, and so I just want to let you know that's back in the hopper now, and I think that's, that's a good thing for us to revive.
Great, that's great.
So, anyway, that's all I have for old business.
Very good.
Okay, any other old business? Okay, we'll move on to public comments. Is there any public comment this time? Okay. Other?
I was just gonna, thanks for the parent academy FYI notice, I think that looks really great, I think the topics look really terrific, I hope there's good participation and, but I just did want to make one comment, which is that one of the workshops is called Living as a Teen in 2014, and I was just gonna, just put out there to whomever that maybe it'd be a good idea to try and get a teen on the panel.
Okay.
Not sure how candid some teens can actually be, but I think hearing from young people themselves would be good.
I'd also use that to, to give a, to give kudos to the work that the Health and Wileman's Committee has been doing this year, and that's just, that discussion started towards the end of last year, but they've, they've really followed through on that, I mean, Tom serves on that, Lariante, the food service director, serves on that, I think they're, they're really doing some, some good stuff, and hopefully this will be a success considering all the time and effort they put into planning, but might as well try it and see, see how it goes, so. Thank you for your support, for anything you can do to fucking about.
Tweet about it.
Tweet the heck out of it.
Now that you've got all those followers.
If we get our Facebook page going, you can ask lots of questions.
Not that you're counting.
Check it every day.
All right, any other, other items? Okay. All right, we'll move on to action items. Does anyone wish to approve anything to the consent agenda? Okay, so may I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the Chancal Livingston School Local Assistance Plan Diagnostic Self-Review Document and Report?
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
And Lisa. Discussion. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept a donation of CDs and books from Richard Gilbert and Carol Urban. See attached.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa. Discussion. Would like to thank them for their contribution. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the list of additional emergency conditional substitute teachers and substitute non-instructional staff for the 2014-15 school year.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa. Discussion. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the recommendation of Jen McCracken to conduct selection classification fitness testing for the 2014-15 winter sport season.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa. Discussion. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. A motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the terms and conditions of employment for the Assistant Superintendent for Support Services for 2014-15.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa. Discussion. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the 2014-15 CLS Before-School Enrichment Program structure?
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We're going to be removing item 6.8 from the agenda for this evening, and may I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the revised 2014-15 school tax bills totaling $1,143.21 in reduction adjustments, and to make the appropriate refunds to the property owners, and upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the previous year's school tax bills, refunding a total of $9,326.68 in reduction adjustments, and to make appropriate refunds to the property owners from the district's tax surchargeary reserve.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa. Discussion. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We will not be having executive session tonight, so may I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Rick, are you in favor?
Rick?
Oh, I'm already backing up. Thanks for alerting me.
So, how is it?